This city council session is now called to order. Uh, we may request Councillor Rokibares to lead the one-minute period.
Um, good morning everyone. Madam Chairwoman, this is Madam Madar. Uh, on the on, uh, maraming salamat po sa ano ito. Uh, sana po ay patamay po kami ng susong, uh, talindad med para mga diskusyon. Sa amoy po kami sa tanungan. At ang dami po, marami pa ang salamat po. Oo, ayun po.
May sir, council secretary, I'm in the corner now.
Morning everybody, this is Mr. Jeffery Nishko. Councillor Raul D'Arroyo. Councillor Daniel Benoit, Councillor Edwin Ardenzo. Councillor Rafael Vitor, G. De La Peña. Councillor Maria Christina, G. Esplana.
Present.
Councillor Jerome Bart.
Present.
Councillor Pablo Sica Pernillo. Councillor Jose Enrique Cortiles. Councillor Delia. Councillor Cleante Víctor. Councillor Pablo E. Olivares II. Councillor Fernando P. Kison. Councillor, Councillor Marvin E. Santos.
Present.
Councillor Nina Zetin Arzotz.
Present.
Councillor Alan Fortan. Councillor John Ian G. Yana. Councillor Jose Maria G. Yana. Christopher, uh, Vigo President, Christopher Liar. And Escatade Nation President, Hama, and Robert Cota. We are ready for to do business, uh, matang.
There are being enough members to constitute a column. You now proceed, City Council Secretary's report. There was a motion to adopt, seconded by Councillor Rokibares. Councillor's, uh, City Council Secretary's report is approved. You now proceed to the minutes, to the approval of the minutes of the preview session. There was a motion by Councillor Ian Liliana, seconded by Councillor Rokibares. Uh, the minutes of the preview session dated July 14, 2022 is approved.
For proceeding, we have draft ordinance number 04, 2022. Councillor Jose Enrique Cortiles as proponent. An ordinance establishing the features of celebration in the city of Pal尼亚que and prescribing advanced report.
Draft ordinance number four is referred to the Committee on Education and the Committee on Appropriations.
Next is draft ordinance number 05, 2022. Councillor Nina Zetin Arzotz as proponent. An ordinance, 2022, establishing of free PWD, free PWD 23 by sheer motor cycle parking in all public and private entities operating in the territory to restrictions of the city of Pal尼亚que.
Ordinance number five is referred to the Committee on Persons with Disability, um, and the Committee on Public Order and Safety. I would just like to note, uh, that, uh, maybe, uh, we have not proceed, proceeded yet with, uh, approval of the new rules. Maybe, the Committee on, or the Committee on the Persons with Disability is a bit improper for the different alternatives. Committee on for differently able persons. No, maybe we can take note of that, Mr. Madam Bigroyd. Yes, proceed.
Next, we have draft ordinance number 06, 2022. Councillor John Ian G. Yana as proponent. An ordinance amending the statute for the solo parents and their children, localizing the topic at 8972, also known as the Solo Parents Act of 2000, in the city of Pal尼亚que, providing penalties for by the general, according to the statute.
Draft ordinance number six is referred to the Committee on Women and Family and the Committee on Appropriations.
Next, we have draft ordinance number 07, 2022. Councillor Maria Christina G. Esplana and, uh, Councillor Roberto P. De La Peña as proponents. An ordinance, amending City Ordinance Number 270-11, otherwise known as the Revice Sanitation Code of 270 in the city of Pal尼亚que.
Draft ordinance number seven is referred to the Committee on Health and Sanitation.
Next, we have resolution, snap resolution number 008, 2022. Councillor Jose Enrique Cortiles as the proponent. A resolution authorizing the owner of Mayor Eric L. Olivares to accept the donation of a portion of real property covered by transfer certificate of title number 165018, with an area of 1,000 square meters owned by Bank of Commerce located at Cherry East, Palikas Valley, Pal尼亚que City for socialized housing purposes.
Uh, draft resolution number eight is referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Next is draft resolution number 009, 2022. Councillor Marvin E. Santos as proponent. A resolution designating Councillor Vando El Pizón as regular and Councillor Marvin E. Santos as alternative representatives to the Philippine Councillor Steve and Metro Manila Councillor Steve.
Draft ordinance number nine is referred to the Committee on External Affairs.
Next is draft resolution, uh, number 010, 2022. Councillor Maria G. Valeria Christina G. Esplana as the proponent. A resolution authorizing the owner of City Mayor Eric L. Olivares to negotiate and sign any pertinent documents relative to the purchase of a parcel of land owned by Hoden J. Madamba and Astelio D. Madamba, covered by PCP number, uh, 2730 by one, with a total area of 473 square meters located at Cherry East, Palikas Valley, Pal尼亚que City.
Draft resolution number 10 is referred to the Committee on Urban Mission Areas and the Committee on Appropriations.
Next, we have committee.
Uh, before we proceed, um, we are going to draft ordinance number seven, proposed by Councillor, uh, Maria Christina Esplana and Councillor Raffi De La Peña. Uh, yours truly referred to, referred to the Committee on Health. Um, I would like to, uh, make an amendment on that. Uh, we are referring it to the Committee on Health and the Committee on Ways and Means. Since it here, uh, to revise the sanitation code, that also means that there will be, uh, revisions in terms of, uh, the manner in which we impose fines when they try to certain health and sanitation services. So that is referred to the Committee on Health and the Committee on, um, Ways and Means. Uh, yes, Councillor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Who would be the?
The next committee is the Committee on Health. Yes, proceed.
Uh, next, we have communications. Uh, first is division from Mr. Victoriano A. Sanbato, Sanbato Junior, resident for the Lata Village Home Owners Association Inc., requesting assistance regarding the opening of a road right-of-way at 815 Street Place 2 for Tomata Village, Palikas Valley, Pal尼亚que City.
Communications from Mr. Victoriano Salvador is referred to the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
I am there.
Yes, uh, Councillor Rokibares.
Uh, may we differ from?
Why need reasons? For, uh, communications from Mr. Victoriano Salvador. We are referring it to the department of, uh, to the Homeowners Affairs Office.
Madam Chairman, that's it for proceeding. Yes, we have committed reports.
Madam Chairwoman, move to the side of the meeting of the committee.
There was a motion to dispatch the leading of the committee report, seconded by Councillor G. Esplana. Leading of the committee reports is, uh, dispensed with, um...
Madam Chairman, could I proceed?
Yes, uh, I have read this.
Uh, for second reading, we have a draft resolution number 004, 2022. Councillors Maria Christina G. Esplana, Pablo E. Capel, uh, Pablo E. Olivares II. Councillor Raul Encha Amorao. Councillor Jose Enrique Cortiles, Councillor Edwin Ardenzo, and Councillor Jerome Bart Empley as, as proponents. A resolution authorizing the owner of City Mayor Eric L. Olivares to negotiate and sign any pertinent documents relative to the purchase of a parcel of land owned by Jacito D. Noy and Velasco and Christina F. Velasco, covered by PCP numbers 010 to 01, 7003232, with a total area of 459 square meters, located at, located at Cherry East, Palikas Valley, Pal尼亚que City.
For, uh, draft resolution number four, is there a committee report?
Yes, Madam Chair.
There was a motion to adopt, to committee report, seconded by, uh, Councillor Rokibares. Draft resolution number four has several proponents who is going to speak on behalf of the resolution. Yes, uh, Councillor Maria Christina Esplana, you may now have the floor. Um, sorry, Madam Chair, before I proceed to, uh, my resolution, uh, there's a point of inquiry, may I? Yes, what's your point of inquiry, Councillor Esplana?
Yes, uh, for resolution number 008, um, the resolution authorizing the owner of Mayor Eric Olivares to donation, pardon. Um, I, it's for Ways and Means. It was, uh, directed to the Committee on Ways and Means, uh, to me also, I, I would also suggest for the urban, uh, mission.
Asking this for socialized housing purposes. Yes, Madam Chair. Draft resolution number eight is referred to the Committee on Ways and Means and the Committee, Committee on Urban Mission. Uh, Committee on Ways and Means is the lead committee. Thank you for that, Councillor Esplana. Thank you, Madam Chair, I will proceed now to the podium.
Your Vice Mayor Doan Villa Bresk, my fellow councillors, my distinguished guests, good morning here. Today, I present to you Resolution Number 004, a resolution authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Eric L. Olivares to negotiate and sign any pertinent documents relative to the purchase of parcel of land owned by Jaciro, Binoy, and Velasco, and Christina F. Velasco, covered by PCP numbers 010-2017003232, with a total area of 459 square meters located at Cherry East, Palikas Valley, Pal尼亚que City. I want to ask each and everyone present here today, what is the first thing that you need when building a family? Ano po ba 'yung isang sa'ta'ning palakailangan ng bawat pamilya? Hindi po ba isang pahay? Isang kirahan? For what we want to build? A home where you can live, if, most especially, a home where you can build a strong family and create memories. Ladies and gentlemen, these people from Cherry East has been living on the said property for more than 30 years already. At bawat isa po sa kanila, ay matagal nang namangarap na mangkaroon ng saniling lupa o tahanan sa lu, sa lugar kung saan silang nagsimulang buo ng pamilya at nakabuo ng maraking kalangan. At ngayon po, unibiling ako sa aking mga kasamahan, especially Councillor Bonbenson. Na sana po, apertidong samahan. Sa mga nipu ako, naipagilangan ang kalapatan at pangarap ng aking mga kababayan sa Cherry East, na makasa kanila ang lupa na tinigla ng kanilang mga bahay. Let us all become a channel of blessing to them, to these 26 families, and be an instrument in achieving a dream. Kaya ako natin na tayo ay maghingay tungo sa pagtupad na matagal na nilang pinakaharap. Sa mga nipu ako, naiparamdam sa kanila, sa aking mga kababayan, hindi lamang po sa mga talagang Cherry East, kung hindi sa lahat ng mga talagang pamilya na nasa parayong support, na hindi po sila magatting isa. Ang higit ko, ang aking gobyerno, ayaw, lalaban, aalalay, at pupunod sa kanila. Sana po, hindi po mahulit ko madagdagan pa ang mga kababayan natin na lamibilongin ko sa malalayong propinsya. Na minsan, nabibigyan, nabibigyan nga po ng kirahan, umit, tulad naman sa pasilidad, uh, pasilidad, tulad ng probi, kuryente, at bigyan sa lahat, malayo sa kanilang malambuhay. At isa din po sa mga init na naapekron dito, ay mga talahanan. Kaya po, uh, sa mga, uh, Cherry East, wag po kayo matalala, sama-sama po tayo lalabar, wala't iba na. Thank you po, and maraming salamat patay kayo, mga panunuan.
Maraming salamat, Consejala G. Esplana, sa iyong makapagpagdambang na tanungpa dito. The floor is now open for questions, any questions? Yes, uh, Councillor Rico Gómez.
Uh, Madam Chairperson, di naman to question, but, uh, for them, one of the proponents, he does not want to state of support, uh, especially to mga kababayan natin. Sa mga kababayan natin, ganun, eh, tulad po ng maya ng buhay namin, ni Raffi dito, eh, taga na na sa Cherry East, mga pareho na mga bisaya, and natiro sa Metro Manila, para makita o mahingi na buhi o mapapa, mapapunta ng mga anak nila. Orakirang na ginagawa tabangan, matawanan na din, na sila'y magka, balay, um, ilan ang galingon, eh, isukot akong sila'y balik na rap, dito sa mayroon na taas at security, na na sila diri sa Pal尼亚que. In other words, it's a term, uh, para hindi na may rap ang mga secretary natin sa kontensi. At sinasabi ko, ang buhay po nila ay tulad po ng buhay ng pamilya namin di, Councillor Raffi De La Peña. Marami po sa mga kababayan natin, mga bisaya, mga naglakas ang loob ng buo kung magta dito sa Metro Manila para magkano na halagbuway at mapagharap po ang kanila mga masa. Sana po, mapasnigan natin sila na pagkataon at papiga sila na magandang security para tuloy-tuloy po ang adil na pagasenso dito sa lungsod ng Pal尼亚que, sa tulong po ng aking National City Council, at sa tulong po ng Administrasyon di Mayor Eric Bonbalde.
Thank you, maraming salamat, Councillor Rico Gómez. Maraming bisaya sa Cherry East, tatapo din ang mga di kunanaguman at mga oragon, ayaw, natatapos na sila ng kamay. Uh, any more questions, any more questions on the floor? Uh, we would like to acknowledge the arrival of our leader president. Our, uh, Councillor Captain Christopher Abidal.
Good morning, I'm going to chair.
Good morning.
I'm Madam Chair.
Any more questions? Is there, is there no more, no more questions? Yes, Councillor Rokibares.
Uh, Madam Chair, there are no more questions, I will terminate.
There was a motion to terminate, seconded by Councillor Bonbenson and Councillor Ben Amorao. The period of deliberation is terminated. Here are the amendments and the amendments on the floor. Yes, Councillor Rokibares.
Madam Chair, na atin po proponent, uh, we are in request for, that as a sign of support, even from the councillors of this district, that all, uh, councillors physically present, uh, may be added a co-proponent of the majority.
There was a motion that all councillors physically present be made co-proponents. I saw Councillor Inshong raising his hand.
Seconded motion.
Seconded by Councillor Inshong. So that, uh, the motion to amend, uh, the fact of adding the ex-co-proponent for ano, co-proponent is approved. Here it is approved.
Madam Chair, there are no more amendments, I move to for the termination and, uh, move for to approve.
It was moved and seconded by Councillor Bonbenson. Uh, it was moved by Councillor Bonbenson, seconded by, uh, Councillor Ben Amorao. Resolution number four is, uh, now approved. A second reading.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes, uh, Councillor. Yes, uh, Madam Chair, the third.
Move to the side, uh, Madam Chair.
Motion to suspend the rules, any second. Seconded by Councillor Bonbenson, rules are suspended.
Uh, for second reading, Madam Chair, Resolution Number 009, all consideration, move to read, Madam Chair.
There was a motion to read.
Seconded motion.
Count, seconded by Councillor Bonbenson.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councillor. Yes.
Uh, for second reading, we have draft Resolution Number 009, 2022, Councillor Marvin E. Santos as the proponent. A resolution designating, designated Councillor Vando El Pizón as regular and Councillor Marvin E. Santos as alternate, uh, representative to lead in Councillor Lee, uh, Councillor Steve and Metro Manila, Councillor Steve.
Please go to speak on behalf of the measure. Since there's still, uh, there's, there's no committee report yet.
Reading.
Councillor Bonbenson is the chairperson for, who is reading the committee report? Who is the chairperson for External Affairs?
Ivan Bonbalde.
Yes, Councillor Bonbenson, are you reading the committee report? Why need reasons? The chairperson for the Committee on External Affairs, Councillor Vando El Pizón is reading this committee report, who is speaking on behalf of the measure. Yes, majority of your leader, Councillor Marvin Santos, you may now have the floor.
Maraming salamat po sa amin po na excited na Councillor. At eh, Vice Mayor Doan Villa Bresk, nag sabihin pong mga kasamahan dito sa councilo. Madam Chair, thank you po for our decision. At daya po na kado yan, at tayo po ay nagbibigay ng mga napapadala na representante sa Philippine Councilor Steve, Metro Manila Councilor Steve, kung saan talaga Councillor ng ating kong chairman ng external affairs. Uh, hinihingi po na rin sa ating councilo na maabubahan pong solution na po para mag informan po ng kanyang representasyon sa ating kong lidigan ng mga pagtihan sa kung Pilipinas. Here po, Madam Chair, maraming, maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Councillor Marvin Santos. The floor is now open for questions. Any questions on the floor?
Morning, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councillor Vando.
As I po, ang kasalubuhin po, uh, sa Committee on External Affairs, ang chairman, it's the Marvin Kong Vice Chairman. At, uh, so ay po, sa PCN, ako po interminusyal chairman. So, baka po yun lang pong, 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 pong okay lang sa ating councilo, uh, na gawin tong solution to para hinatayong magtatanong. Here na po, at si Marvin po, is with Metro Manila, PCN, everything. And I know, councilor Bayan din, magaginom na din. And I know, Councilor Ryan din, magagin namin dyan Meron na, di, member collection external So, either way pwede lahat And, uh, gusto ko pa yata ng sa naayos mo namin ng Councilor Ryan Na ang ating councilor Pablo Olivares Ay, uh, takat po nang sa pulso ng officer ng NMYL XCR
For Pablo Olivares
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, suggestion ako for the City of HSP's, uh, pilang baguhan Dito sa ating City Council, na daes ko kung matuto Uh, kung mapagwasian, kung na dapat pwedeng order o kung ano mang ayaw sa ating uwan Uh, I hope na ma-recomend sana 'yung mga baguhan makatabi sana ng mga federal ng council Upang makapagtanung po kami sa isa't isa, kung pwede lang po
Uh, I hope the majority floor leader takes note of the suggestions Maybe we can talk about it as we discuss the final, uh, draft of our rules
Right, Madam Chair
Yes, uh, Councilor Ryan Liliana And gusto ko sa, uh, i-manifest, no, sa lahat ng members ng NMYL National Movement of Young Legislators Nilang ba tayong kasama do? Ben, kasama pa ba? If you are below forty If you're a councilor be, uh, below forty years old, you are an automatic member of the NMYL
Uh, Madam Chair Madam Chair
Uh, please, please, let us support, uh, Councilor Pablo Olivares And also, then please tell your friends as well from other cities So that we can garner more votes and support your Councilor Pablo Olivares That's on July 27 That's on, uh, the, the, the elections will be held on July 27 So I hope that all NMYL members will be there to support Councilor Olivares Since there are no more items in today's agenda This, uh, session is now adjourned